Risk management just from my.
All right, council.
We're in progress.
All right, let's get this meeting started. October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, six P M. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to a republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible will liberty and justice for all. Will be quick, please take a roll.
I'm remember Wood.
Excuse?
I'm remember Richardson.
Present.
I'm remember Crossman.
Here.
I'm remember Pangizer.
Here.
I'm remember Hess.
Yeah.
I was remember Johnstone. I'm remember Kaminsky.
Here.
Do we get agenda approval? That's our S.
And we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Councilmember Kaminsky audit just by here.
Second.
Thank you. It's been second. Uh, motion is seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. We think theories. I've been through. We have special presentations. Dean, we have you talking about public services winter preparation. Please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, my name is Dean Norton, the Public Services Department Operations Manager. Um, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the City of Yelm Winter Operations Plan. Um, first, I I want to start off by saying thank you to all of you council members. Um, if you remember this time last year. I uh came here with an I L A um with the City of Yelm and Thurston County for the City of Yelm to purchase anti-ice material through Thurston County. Um, because of you approving that uh I L A, the city has paid or has saved uh about twenty five hundred dollars. In anti-ice material this year alone. Um, so it was a huge uh. Savings for the taxpaying residents of the city and the city itself, obviously. Um. It saving that kind of money allowed us to upgrade our tanks. We purchased recently purchased two bigger tanks for our anti-ice trucks. Um, and we were also able to upgrade our filling method, um, which was previously a gravity method. Which was pretty unsafe, um, and honestly very time consuming. Um, we were able to up upgrade that to a pump method. Which is extremely safe for our employees and it's very fast uh to refill the trucks. Um, so with those upgrades, it'll allow us to get a pre-treatment done quite a bit faster and much more efficiently. Um, so with all of that said, I again, thank you very much for approving that I L A. Um, okay, now on to the winter operations plan. Um, just a little bit background of what we have. We have uh two trucks with plows. Um, two trucks equipped with uh liquid anti-ice sprayers and one dump truck equipped with a sander spreader. And all of these uh are operational and ready to um work such. As soon as inclement inclement weather hits. Hopefully that's not anytime soon. Um. Anti-icing is completed when it it's clear with freezing temperatures predicted and precipitation is not in the forecast. Um, a salt brine anti-icing agent. Will be applied to establish routes prior to the start of a snow and or ice event when predicted. Um, these are oftentimes the lines that you guys see on the roadway. Um, that's what that is, is the anti-ice material. Um, salt brine will help keep snow and or ice from sticking to roadway surfaces for easier removal. Um, I I I want to reiterate the fact that we can only apply this material when there is not a bunch of rain forecasted either before or after. Um, when the roads are. Wet, the anti-ice material does not work. It just basically the 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 water washes it all of the material away. So you're not getting any treatment. Um, so a little bit of moisture on the road is okay. Um, but if the roads are completely soaked, the material doesn't work. And it doesn't do what it's intended to do. Um, we monitor the forecast daily to give us the best chance of getting ahead of inclement weather. Um, but because of the unpredictability of weather, as everyone here knows, we can't really try to predict it, but sometimes it doesn't work out. Uh, we may not always get it correct and we may spray when we really didn't need to. Um, and that's just. I'm always gonna air. We are always going to err on the side of caution. Um, I'd rather have it on the ground and not need it than not have it on the ground and need it. So. Um, we we want to always err on the side of caution when it comes to public safety. Um. Sanding and salting is done when there are icy conditions and when precipitation is in the forecast. Um, spreading sand and or salt on hazardous areas and critical locations on priority one routes is the first step. In snow and ice control with special attention given to problem areas, hills, curves, um intersections, uh things like that. Um, snow plows will begin working when snow starts to accumulate only when the snow depth is three inches or more. Um, in the event of a severe storm, we will staff a two-truck, four-man crew for twelve-hour shifts. As long as hazardous road conditions exist or are expected to continue. Um, once snow plows are dispatched, uh I myself will contact the Public Services Director, the City Administrator and the Mayor. To let all of them know what is happening and how we're uh trying to tackle the inclement weather. Um, our focus will be on priority one roads, which are the roads highlighted in the reddish pink color on the screen. And I also gave all of you a map as well um to look at. Just in case you weren't able to read the the names of the roads on the on the screen there. Um, the snow plows and or anti-ice sprayers will start with priority ones. Roads including city facilities. Fire Department, Police Department and possible routes the school may use. Um, when we apply anti-ice treatment to the roadway before a predict predicted event, um, it will only be to those priority one roads. Um, snow plows and or anti-ice sprayers will remain on priority one roads until they are safe for travel. Or if snow continues to fall or freezing conditions continue to be forecasted. When priority one roads are safe to travel, we will move to priority two roads. When those are safe for travel, we will move on to priority three roads. Um, at the end of a snow and ice event, when when there is no prediction of continued inclement weather. Uh, the maintenance lead and myself will schedule the street sweeper to begin cleaning all the routes. Um, this will be done as soon as possible to reduce potential impacts to our storm water systems. Um, the full City of Yelm Winter Operations Plan is available on the City of Yelm website. If you would like to take a look. Um, you can you can do so there. Um, thank you for your time tonight. And is there any questions?
Councilor Crossman.
Um, just what's back there? Young Terra off hundred and fifth. What's that back in there? That's priority one and two. Where are you looking at? Um, bottom of your map in the middle. You know, there it yeah. And that priority roads are priority one.
Oh, right here off the Clark Road?
Yeah, what's that?
That is our uh water tower.
Okay.
And that's a pretty good sized hill that we had recently paved. Um, the list as a priority in case there was a a water system issue that we needed to get access to. That is on our list to anti-ice and plow.
Council Richardson.
Yeah, so I don't know if you know, Dean, but uh I on the top of your head maybe, how many miles of of road do you have to anti-ice? Do you do you have a?
I don't have a number off the top of my head, to be honest with you. Um, it's it's a it's we break it down by lane mile. Um, so obviously the number um is going to be, it's gonna sound a lot higher, um, but it's it's roughly about thirty-two lane miles. And that accounts for both the there and back.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, it's about sixteen and a half. Uh, centerline miles.
That's for all priority one, two and three?
That's just for priority one.
That's just priority one. Okay.
That's the only one that I have actually done the math on as far as how many miles it is.
The most important?
Yes.
Councilor Hess, uh, reference to all the various materials that can be put down onto the road. Uh, when they go in through the storm drains, it's. We're not looking at uh an issue of disrupting our ecosystem to possibly contamin. Not I don't like the word contaminate, but maybe cause a problem within the Squally River and uh salmon runs and things like.
Correct. These are all eco-friendly. Uh, items that are used and material that is used.
Yep.
Other questions, comments from council? Thank you, Dean. Good presentation.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment. We have two cards filled out. There's anyone else from the audience who wants wishes to address the council myself? Please pull out all these cards, turn it in. First up, we have Chris Woods, superintendent.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Chris Woods. I am proud to be serving in my third year as superintendent of Yelm Community Schools. But tonight I speak to you as a neighbor, fellow voter, and someone who cares deeply about the future of our children. I'm here to explain why the November four, two thousand twenty-five levy matters so much to our community. This levy is not about politics. It's about people. It's about teachers, counselors, bus drivers, parent educators, nurses, coaches and support staff who show up every day for our students. It's about the programs that give our children a chance to discover their strengths. Sports, music, career and technical education, counseling and special education supports. When levy funding isn't available, those real supports get smaller or disappear and the effects are immediate and personal. We've seen the consequences of past levy defeats, fewer staff, larger class sizes, increased fees for families. Reductions in extracurricular activities and support and a strain on transportation and after-school care. Those are not abstract problems. They are things that affect our neighbors, our local economy, and most of all, our children's daily school experience. A few key ways a levy supports our schools. It funds staff who work directly with students, teachers, parent educators, counselors, office professionals, nurses. Bus drivers, food service workers, facility and maintenance staff and safety personnel. It helps maintain transportation and before and after school options that working families depend on so they can go to work. It preserves essential learning opportunities through electives and C T E programs, athletics and other extracurricular activities that prepare students for college. Careers in a lifetime of opportunity. Provides support for students with special needs and for those who require extra help to succeed. I also want to share that this levy has been endorsed by the Thurston County Chamber Board of Directors and the Thurston County Economic Development Council. Strong signal from our regional business community that investing in our schools is an investment in Yelm's future. If this public investment is not renewed, we will face very significant reductions that will impact every part of the school day. We will see increased fees and decreased or eliminated access to vital activities and athletics. Fewer essential student supports like counseling and nursing services. Stretched special education and intervention and transportation reductions that make daily life harder for working families. Over time, those changes make it more difficult for our community to attract businesses and families and to keep the momentum we all want for Yelm. This is a moment for our community to decide what kind of future we want for our children. Your voice matters. I urge you to vote and encourage your family, friends and neighbors to do the same. The strength of our schools is the strength of our community. Thank you for your time, your partnership and your commitment to the students of Yelm.
Thank you. Hannah. Please come on up to the podium.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and thank you for Mr. Woods to for inviting me. My name is Hannah Hiva and I am a senior at Yelm High School and a student representative on the school board. I am very heavily involved at Yelm as I am the senior manager for the yearbook and the A S B Public Relations Officer. To me, the levy is of utmost importance and provides so much for me and my classmates. One of the biggest things being sports. Even though I do not participate in sport for Yelm, my life often revolves around sports. As I have become very involved with the media department. Being on the sideline for Yelm sport sports has sparked something inside of me. A fire that I'm going to carry for the rest of my life and into my career. I hope to attend the University of Oregon and to get a degree in media studies and sports business. To me, without the help of Yelm Athletics, I would not be where I am today. It is extremely saddening that these opportunities may be taken away for students like me. For many students, if not all, extracurricular activities and their favorite teachers. Are what keeps students coming to school and motivated to complete their studies. And our reality may be that we lose both of those things. After multiple levy failures, it is extremely disheartening to see a community that is so against the success of students like me. Reading comments on social media and talking to members of the community is extremely degrading because it feels as if my success. And the success of my classmates does not matter at all. Well, sometimes it is hard to see through all the noise and negatives negative energy in our community. There are good people and students that are working to make the best out of bad situation. A small percentage of our community have helped to raise funds to keep some of our clubs and activities alive. And without them, my classmates and I might drown in the negativity. A group of students have also come together to support the education about the levy and what it means to us. We come from all walks of life, different clubs, some of us athletes, some of us not, and some of us just students who are barely involved. This group of students have given me hope that Yelm is creating powerful, successful and motivated students. That represent the turn of the day name to its full potential. I have lived in Yelm my entire life and I have never seen such a toxic community that cares a little about the well-being of Yelm students. And I hope that one day we can return to the loving and supporting community that we once had. But I fear that I might not see that while I'm still here in Yelm.
Thank you, Hannah. All right, moving on. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak? On the second.
Not have any hands raised.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda. We have the October seventh, twenty twenty-five study session minutes and the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Hess.
I move that we uh approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kingizer. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. We have ordinance number one-one-three-six municipal court change and impress funds.
Stephanie here and councilmembers. So ordinance one-one-three-six, um, so in the court we have two cash drawers. They're starting change funds for future floors, fifty dollars. That amount has been was set years ago. Um, due to increased cost of business, they do need more change on. So they have requested to bump that up to a hundred dollars for each cash drawer. Um, over here at City Hall, each of our cash drawers have two hundred dollars in it. Um, but the court feels that one hundred per cash drawer would be adequate. So we're just coming to council asking if we can uh move this ordinance forward and up there beginning cash.
Questions. Councilor Richardson.
And I'd like to move to approve ordinance number one-one-three-six amending Yelm Municipal Code three, six, zero, zero, one, zero. Increasing the dollar amount. Of the change and impress funds.
This motion approved. Do we have a second? Council Kaminsky?
Second.
Thank you. Is there uh any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to resolution number six-six-three reserve fund balance policy. Stephanie, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. So um before you is a reserve fund balance policy. That we have been talking about um for quite a while. Um, we have taken this to the finance committee and they have reviewed it. And so basically what we're doing is we're establishing recommended reserve levels for our major funds. And then some of our special revenue funds. And so um. What this allows is for us to kind of weather those um fluctuations that make we come across in the economy or what have you. It is um good business practice. It's also um good accounting practices for the state auditor's office and the government's accounting standards boards that we. Put a reserve policy in place. Currently, when we adopt our policy. Policy but our budget, we always have um like a general fund reserve that we try to accomplish. And so this just puts that in writing what our goals are, not only for the general fund. But also um we have in here, we can look through the policy, we have the um. The we have a cumulative reserve fund that is set aside just for um catastrophic catastrophic type events. Um, so that's we have the street fund, we have the lodging tax fund. Um, and then we have our major utility funds, waters, we were stormwater. And our um internal service funds, equipment rental and um information services. Now, the important thing is that although we do have this policy. Say we get into a budget year or we maybe the economy has gone down a little bit and we know that we just are not going to meet that reserve. We would call that out in our budget ordinance. We would um, you know, make that transparent and known that. Although we have this policy in place, we are not able to meet a specific reserve. So um. There is a lot of detail in here and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Hess.
Uh, question reference to the lid uh one, you didn't mention that uh fund. Is that any lid or is it what was that only for a specific?
So um. That was when we had the um Killian Road L I D, we had that fund established. And so right now we don't have any um local improvement districts active. But if we were to create another L I D, we would have that, we would have that fund in place.
Okay, thank you for that.
Other questions, comments? Look for a motion. Council Richardson.
Move to approve resolution number six-six-three adopting a reserve fund.
Is there a second? Councilor Crossman, be it by here. Uh, any discussion? Councilor Hess.
Ms. Nanovich, I want to say thank you for finally uh getting this before us. I appreciate the uh numbers that you've have here as well as the percentages. And I think it's a a good thing that we pass this because of the fact that. These here are what allows us to in the future when, as she said, the economy goes bad, just like in two thousand eight. We have these reserve funds available. And so I really appreciate that. Thank you for the hard work you do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, council. Moving on. We're good? Moving on to item C, amendment number one to a rotten road reconstruction professional professional service agreement with parametrics for water main engineering services. Cody.
Yes. Hello, council. Mayor, thank you. Um, in front of you is an amendment number one to the rotten road reconstruction project. As you know, we're doing rotten road in the next two years. Um, the pipe under rotten road is an old A C main, which is asbestos cement. Um, not the kind you can inhale, but it's old cement. It's about forty years old pipe. Um, so we want to upgrade at the same time. It's in our plan to upgrade in the next five years. It makes sense to do it now versus digging up a brand-new road in five years. Um, so this amendment's with the current engineer to add on this there and then do the upsizing of the pipe for us. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Top for a motion. Council Richardson.
Move to authorize Mayor Joe Depinto to approve amendment number one to the road and road reconstruction professional surface agreement with parametrics. For the addition of engineering services for water main replacement upgrades in the amount of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. Dollars and thirty-six cents.
Is there a second? Councilor Hess. Is there uh any more discussion? That was it? Was that a second, correct?
Yes, it was a second.
And you had a question? Go ahead.
Uh, Director Colton referenced, because you did mention what the old one is. Is it gonna be pulled out and removed or is it just gonna be left in place?
We ninety, this won't be left in place. And that's ninety percent of the time what we do is leave it in place.
I just wanted to know because of the asbestos, the dangers within the ecosystem that that can cause.
Yeah, this this and this is not like the old asbestos insulation where you have get mesothelioma. This is, you know, cement, this concrete. And so it doesn't break apart like that does, but it's better just to leave it in because of possible contamination of anything. So you're right.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? It's been motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. All right, moving right along to old business. We have that scheduled. Moving on to standing council committee reports, starting with the public safety committee.
Uh, we haven't had a new meeting, um, and we're not gonna have one in the limit due to election day. But um, I do need to see if I can get either with you and um. Mister Stansel as well as the police chief. There are some questions being asked about the flood. Uh, system. So I would like to be able to get that to be put. Some community members their mind at ease on what's happening.
Sure, absolutely. That's we'll uh make note and all right, Joe. Is that it?
That's all.
All right, moving on to the public services committee.
Yeah, meantime, we talked about the anti-ice area. We talked about the water main. Um, so one day it's coming up, December ninth, we. Council will have resolution for an annexation into local agreement with Thurston County. Um, and then. And I'm scheduled yet, but we will have open house for the talk about annexations for the public that is concerned. There's always people can nervous by annexation. They can come learn about it. Then we talked about the comp plan and a little bit and how the annexation kind of goes hand in hand with that. And then November eighteenth at six o'clock, there'll be an open house at the community center to talk about the comp plan. And they were canceling planning commission that day for us to talk about that and have that open house. And then we talked about. We have an arrangement coming up and then the trail bridge should be open early December, hopefully at the latest. Going on the Squally River. Instruction is in progress as we speak. I think that covers all important stuff.
All right, thank you. Council uh finance committee.
No meeting.
All right, General Government Committee.
We just met uh last hour, actually. We had a really productive meeting. And we talked about uh goodness, there's so many community events happening uh very soon, like scattered throughout. Uh, November and December, really, uh, some of the big highlights, um, which I think Todd will probably go over a little more detailed for you. Um, here in just a few minutes, but like November eighth, they're going to have a um. A show on the stage, I think at Veterans Memorial, um, in there. There also one thing that was really neat to me that we talked about was a Veterans Day burger feed. On Tuesday, the eleventh, from five to seven at the community center, uh, they've never done any. Uh, they've never done anything like that before and there's no council meeting that night. So that's an excellent opportunity to, um, to go and do that free for all veterans and their families. Um, Christmas parade is coming up, Christmas in the park, lots of cool stuff with that. And we talked about a few like boards and commission vacancies. Um, all of that is available on our Facebook page and was brought out this morning. Um, some of those positions you you do have to be within city limits and some you don't. So another way for all of our nine eight five nine seven to be involved. Um, Yelm and surrounding areas. And we talked about some upcoming trainings and things like that for the AWC, um, through SS MPC, um, which is a South Sound Military. Um, breakfast that toasted twice a year, um, very productive meeting.
All right, thank you. Mayor City, Mr. Staff works.
Uh. Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, uh, just a couple of other updates from the various departments. Uh, from the police department, today is National First Responder Day. I know it's been on Facebook all day, but it is National First Responder Day, so thank you to all the first responders. Um, everything's going well with the recent hires and their assignments in the field training program and academy training. Uh, from the court department, uh, Court Clerk Burnham will be attending the annual Court Clerks Conference next week. From the clerk's office, I know this was just mentioned, advertisements have gone out for vacancies on numerous boards and commissions. These include openings on the police advisory, historic preservation, arts commission, tree advisory, parks advisory, and the planning commission. Uh, from the finance department, they will have their fourth session of the financial booth tomorrow at eleven. And the annual audit will start on November twelfth. From public services, you just gave that report, uh, so I won't go into more of that. HR, HR department will have a wellness fair for employees and their families tomorrow from two to five at the community center. Um, communication, recreation, uh, obviously Friday is Halloween. Um, our buildings will have trick or treating from noon to four, um, on Friday. November third, Monday is civics trivia night in partnership with the Secretary of State Civic Engagement Program in Thurston County. That's at six thirty in the community center. Uh, November fifth, cookie decorating at six, November eighth, as mentioned, Veterans Day concert with the hundred and thirty third Washington Army National Guard brass quintet. That will be at one P M on the centennial stage on Saturday, November eighth. November eleventh, as mentioned, was the, is the Veterans Day burger feed, free for veterans and their immediate families from five to seven. Um, and then, as mentioned, December first is tree lighting. November, December fifth is pictures with Santa and December sixth is Christmas in the park and the parade. Uh, from our I T department, we had some power outages over the weekend that created some challenges, uh, in keeping our buildings operational. But they did an outstanding job doing that. Um, we're also dealing with a theft vandalism of nearly a hundred feet of fiber lines that run to the, uh, Public Works Building that were damaged last week or lot stolen. Um, staff was able to get the building connected and are working on a better long-term solution so that, um, that can't happen again. Uh, let's see, we do have some meeting changes, I know I mentioned before, just go over them one more time. Obviously, uh, next Saturday, or next Tuesday, November fourth, uh, we were, we are couns- cancel cancelling the study session because it is my birthday. There's election going on, I guess.
Already.
It's my birthday, that's it. Uh, November eleventh is Veterans Day, so we will move that meeting to the Wednesday, November twelfth. And then the December twenty third council meeting, which is two days before Christmas, uh, that meeting is canceled as well as it, as it normally is. As just mentioned, November thirteenth, Thursday is our South Sound Military Community Partnership hosting their bi-yearly elected officials breakfast at the Eagle Pride Golf Course from eight to nine thirty. It's a great event, uh, if you can make it. And November nineteenth, Mayor, I'm stealing your thunder, community conversations at the community center at six P M, big P M with the mayor, public services director, police chief, and our rec coordinator. So that's our evening one, uh, for the last quarter of this year. Any questions?
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, thank you for that. Good report, um, he said most of his stuff, I was gonna talk for some of it at least. We have a meeting with Congressman Strickland and some other local leaders here coming up this week. Um, we are moving forward with the Yelm Ranger Tenino Trail. Progress is being made from the county side to go ahead and finalize stuff. It's probably looking like January when they'll be coming back to Yelm. Um, and we can do our, uh, the council can do their part of, um, approving it as well. And, um, again, that is taking over the portion that's inside Yelm city limits for, so we can maintain and, um, respond to the, that trail. Um, and lastly, just thank you to Public Works over this weekend, past week for, um, making sure our streets are clean. Obviously, we had a huge storm incident, um, Public Works did a lot to make sure that our streets were clean, the drains were, um, unclogged and, uh, making sure that we were able to move correctly. So thank you again and, um, Cam especially for that one over there. Um, other than that, that's all I've got. Any questions for me? All right, moving on to council member reports, starting with council member Mitski.
I attended the board meeting for the bounding for families and thanks to extra donations. In addition to the hundred families that we will feed, they're going to be giving a hundred extra meals to students from school. Oh, I thought that was great. Um, and I had my in Squali River council meeting that you all love, uh, lots of details. The main speaker, uh, was the Department of Ecology and they were explaining how they are detoxifying and decontaminating the Eatonville dump site, which has been there for forty years. It was originally owned by where it's land that's owned by Warehouser, but was leased by the city of Eatonville. And how many tons of garbage, forty two thousand tons of garbage, thirteen hundred truckloads of debris? Things were starting to float down the river, so they are almost completed. And it's a two to one slope, very, very deep. And they showed us videos of how they actually have to terrace the, the land with concrete and then take their trucks around and go terrace by terrace down to the bottom to get the debris. So it was a very interesting and very good presentation. And then the most exciting thing that we talked about there also was the return of the wild native Chinook salmon, which they have now found are like three feet long. The tribes are thrilled, they're donating fish, they have enough to eat, so very, very, very happy. So I wish I could pan in the camera, but here's a picture of a three foot salmon, you may pass that down. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnstone?
Uh, no reports, uh, I did attend planning commission this, this month. Um, Commissioner Allen had asked me or to pass on to council the possibility of a kids council. I don't know if that's something that Yelm has done before or.
No, no, but it's funny you mention, um, I do think we should start one, um, I don't know about a kids council, but yeah, for students as well that can maybe give a unofficial advice to council. Um, similar to what they do on the school board for the school board. So I don't know if that's exactly what he was talking or if he was talking specifically for the planning commission.
Uh, no, for, for city council.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Councilor Hess.
Uh, intercity transit authority, we are going through the, we're getting ready to do the interview phase for, uh, community, uh, members that will become part of the board, the advisory board. Uh, and then there's also an upcoming, uh, meeting, okay, that's like a debate. That's coming up in reference to, uh, hopefully we can get, there we go, sorry about that. Uh, the, it'll be on May twenty sixth is when they're going to be looking for, uh, doing service changes. And they've got meetings scheduled, one of them happens to be November third. And so hopefully more information will get out of how they can join in and all. But, uh, threats, community members in Yelm would participate in that and give some feedback, that would be very helpful because we are, as I always like to say, I remind them that it's just not lot. There's a Yelm as well, so be nice to have, hopefully we can get some input there. And also I want to say the appreciation for P S E with all the updates that they were giving and for how quickly that information was getting out to the community members. It was very helpful. Uh, today is the, uh, first responders appreciation day. I'm happy to hear all the things that were going on for them. And just nine eleven for me is, uh, what really shows that the first responders, their appreciation, they run into danger as everybody else is trying to get out. So that was, you know, it's very important about that. Uh, feedback for civics one on one, a lot of people liked it, they would like to see it again. Um, not just because of the pizza, but, uh, they learned from it and so it's a really good thing.
Could turn up.
And, uh, with November first coming around this weekend, if the government is still shut down, our community members, some will be affected by that. Uh, for whether it's deals with paycheck or, uh, SNAP or something like that. For those community members, please keep an eye out. There's, uh, plenty of people out there working on trying to make sure that the food pantry is, uh, is stocked. Uh, various churches are available to help out, so the community is coming together for that.
And while, while you're saying that, we do for the city of Yelm, we are offering, um, some payment plans and, um, extra considerations for those impacted. Um, if you are impacted by the, the federal shutdown, you can ask for this and, uh, we will accommodate it.
And then the last thing I have is, uh, Tuesday is election day. At this time, if you have not turned in your ballot, as the auditors have put it, please do not put it in the mail due to the fact that it may not be postmarked on time, uh, because of how the system is set up. So please put it in the drop box and as of tonight, we have an eight point five percent return for the city of Yelm. And for Yelm Community Schools, a nine point five six percent return of ballots. Please, please, uh, encourage your neighbors, please encourage people to actually vote. Because as I've said before, if only ten to fifteen percent of people vote, we, uh, decisions have been made by about five plus one percent of the, uh, community members that could have voted. So just want to put that out there. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Councilor Kingizer.
Um, kind of slow couple of weeks for me. Um, I did get to go to the pizza and politics and that was actually really quite fun with Thurston County, uh, Commissioner Rachel Grant and her assistant, Ashley Brooks, our Yelm city representation with Cody, our public works director, and then, um, Lynn from Parks and Rec. And it was very informative, so this coming mon- yeah, this coming Monday, I can't believe it's the end of October already, uh, the trivia part will happen. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, November second is turning your clocks back and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilor Crossman.
Uh, nothing further, I was already saying.
Councilor Richardson?
Nothing to report.
All right. Moving on, we do have an executive session tonight and this is to discuss consideration of the minimum offering price of sale or lease of real estate for R C W four two point three zero point one one zero one C. And that's going to be a forty five minute, um, forty five minutes, um, thirty seconds. Back at seven twenty three, thank you. All right, so we're, um, taking a break, we are adjourned, but we, for those in the audience, we will be gone for forty five minutes. You can stick around or you can hang out. Or leave, stick around or hang out.
We'll be gone, thanks, sir.
I mean it.
All right, we are back from the executive session. We are ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Councilor Johnstone?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? I think Councilor Crossman has it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes aye na? We are adjourned.
Hold on, we adjourned.